Okay, well, let's call our meeting to order. We appreciate you being here. Our implication will be done by Councilman Mike Snellson and our pledge by Councilmember Logan Millsap.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet together as a community this evening. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to live here. We ask that thy Spirit would be with us as we conduct this council meeting, that we can make the decisions that need to be made to benefit the residents of our city. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
If you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the meeting's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting's agenda as written.
You have a second?
A second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, we'd like to welcome anybody who's here just from the public. We appreciate your attendance here. If you have want to make a public comment. We do, okay? Anyone else would like to make a comment to the City Council, you're welcome to do so. We take two or three minutes and it's not a time to to approve things, but to hear from different people, so that's great. All right, well, let's move to the public comment. Noah, are you here? Is that right? Would you come up and just introduce yourself and just give us your being, your name and if whether you're a resident of the city?
My name is Noah Durst and I am a resident.
Very good.
So, Mayor Packard and members of the City Council, my name is Noah Durst. Today I want to talk about the possibility of preparing to implement a quiet zone along the westernmost railroad here in Springville, the one that the frontrunner will be using in nine years when the station arrives. My wife and I bought our first home in Springville a year ago and had our first child two months after that. We are very happy living here. I hope that my comments tonight don't make it seem like I'm complaining about the current situation with the trains as they are. Like everyone else here, we've gotten used to the trains that we have, which is a relatively small amount, and we don't even notice them anymore. Previously to my current job, I worked for two years at UTA specifically in frontrunner's training department. The people at frontrunner are working very hard to make some great changes to the state of Utah. Some of those changes include the 2X or double tracking of the entire alignment from Provo through Ogden. When they do this, they'll also be doubling the number of trains and cutting the amount of time in between each train in half. Another thing they're doing, which I'm sure you all know, is extending the line from Provo all the way through Payson. The double tracking is set to finish in about four years. Extending the line is estimated to take longer, but I fully anticipate that they will finish before the winter 2034 Olympics. The point of my comment tonight is to share with you the massive amount of frontrunner trains coming through Springville on the westernmost track and honking their horns every crossing. As you, as we do not have a quiet zone implemented like the rest of the alignment, every city from Provo through Ogden. When I look at the number of current frontrunner trains going through a comparable city on the alignment, Orem, being that it's not at the very end of the line, but almost the further south, they currently have fifty-four frontrunner trains passing along their city every single day from 4:52 in the morning and continuing until 9:54 at night. When they double track, this is going to increase to a hundred and eight trains. The number of trains going through Springville will be even higher than a hundred and eight, honking a full horn sequence at every crossing. I don't know much about city budgets or city planning, but I would love for this comment to be, to get you thinking about the future and possibly making the changes to the crossings that the frontrunner will be using so the quiet zone can be implemented on that track. Signs, curbs, medians, yellow paint, nothing too drastic, I imagine, as we already have arms at most of the crossings in question. This could look a lot like preparing one or two crossings a year for the next eight years in preparation for the frontrunner and dividing up the costs so it's more manageable, or just bookmarking this to be discussed later, but hopefully to be done with enough time to get it implemented before the frontrunner comes in. My fear is that if nothing is done preemptively and rather done reactively, we're going to have a lot of really angry people with a hundred and eight-plus trains honking their horn at every crossing, starting at 4:30 in the morning until 10:30 every single night, if Springville has to scramble to get a quiet zone in after the fact. I do know a lot more about safety precautions necessary to allow for the quiet zones to be used, but I didn't think that I had enough time to share them tonight, and I thought the reading FRA regulations this late at night would probably put even the most caffeinated person to sleep. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Do you want to help us?
Yeah, we can touch on that a little bit. I don't have UTA's cost per quiet zone crossing. UP or Union Pacific Railroad is five hundred, eight hundred thousand a crossing, and we have fourteen crossings in town, so it's roughly a seven to ten million dollar project if the city were to bear it all. The good news, it's my understanding that the EA, the environmentalists that we're currently doing on the frontrunner, is presuming that quiet crossings will go in as part of the original project, so I'm hopeful that on Fifteenth West or the frontrunner side of things, that will be the construction schedule. We're also looking at the Provo subconsolidation, which would put the two tracks on 400 West together. We're working on that with both federal and local elected officials. The current proposal on that also changes all of those crossings to quiet zone crossings that will not likely cover the entire portion of the community. So, as we get both of these major projects underway, there may be a few crossings primarily kind of Center Street northward on the Fourth West track where we'll have to examine that more closely. But yeah, it's something we're well aware of. It's a regular concern we hear from citizens and we're working actively to do this.
Well, and it helps us to be reminded as we meet with UTA to bring all those things up on the front end. That's really what you're saying is now's the time to do it, not when it's a problem.
Yeah, we're also closing a number of crossings, do great separated at some of them, so there'll be many more, how do you say that? Fewer crossings, I guess, at the end of the day that they'll need to do it on as well.
Very good, thank you, appreciate your comment. Jason Miller? Are you a resident?
I'm a resident. Call me address?
No.
Apologize for taking your time. I just wanted to get everybody here together in the same room, just to ask a quick question about the urban deer. A number of years ago, we had an abatement program. I just want to see what the status of that was. I had a daughter hit one last night, and I've nearly hit one probably four times over the last three weeks. I'm not sure why they're coming out more, but this is just right down on Fort South, close to the museum. Somebody right in front of me hit one, I guess it was actually out of city limits. It was in Spanish's borders. I just wanted to see what the status of that was, and for whatever reason, they're becoming more prevalent on that side of town, especially on Fort South, just on the main, and they're just impossible to see at night, so it's a
The chief can give you a broader explanation if you want. The project's still ongoing, but it was substantially curtailed. Do you want to give some detail?
One of our officers hit a deer over the weekend, so. Yep. So, we do have a deer abatement program. We have a licensed hunter who's trained in deer abatement in the city environment. We're, have heavy restrictions from DNR on the window of time that we can do the hunting. And because, it's a real issue because they also require us to harvest the deer and use the meat. And so, if it's hot outside, they give us a window during the summer months and just early into early fall, and if it's too warm, the hunter can't kill the deer and harvest the deer in a reasonable amount of time. And so, because it was such a long, hot summer into the fall, very, very few deer were harvested. So, we try to petition DNR to change the window, but they get pushed back from hunters saying that we're harvesting deer from the mountain rather than just city deer, but there are a lot, there's a large population of city deer in the city. So, it's a problem. We're considering this next year, maybe thinking outside of the box and getting a refrigerated truck, but I don't, you know, I don't know who wants to rent us a refrigerated truck for that purpose, but we've thought about it, that they could do hunting and throw them in the truck and then have, we have people that are on a list that want to take the deer, but just for the last two years, it's been really warm, long summers, and haven't been able to harvest hardly any deer, so.
So, how do they tell the difference between urban deer and mountain deer?
It's speculation on their part, but I don't think they tag them or anything.
DWR will say that they absolutely can tell the difference between them. I'm not a deer expert on that, but they've, I mean, the reason they're allowing to take it is because of the difference between the type of deer, kind of how, I mean, what I've heard is kind of both their coats and kind of the meat on them.
And the size. Urban deer are very, very thin, and ones that are out, about or not, you can see much of the difference, so.
Yeah, we get a lot of complaints, though.
Well, if you could just check into it, I mean, if we need to get involved with it, you know, and talk with them a little bit about how to do this. I mean, our family's been hunters for years and we don't accuse the city of killing deer, their, our deer. You know, it's not, it's obviously not deer that we would be hunting.
They're all over. I mean, I think we're going to actively be displacing a lot of them that are on that Fourth South corridor as the high school project comes to an end and there's more human traffic through that tree line down where the old track was or across from where the new high school's being built. We know there's a sizable population in there, but that's still going to take some time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Have the consent agenda? Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, because there's a resolution here, we need to have a roll call vote, so I'll ask for a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second?
I will second that.
Okay, a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, Mr. Riddle? Budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Try to keep these amendments as few as possible during the year, but my list was getting pretty long, so I thought I should come before you and kind of explain the issues that have arisen since the fiscal year started back in July that need to be addressed. You've got your staff report in your packet there with a little bit of an explanation on each of these, but for the benefit that those that might be watching online or that are here in person, I'll give a quick overview of these and then you can ask any questions you'd like. I might have to turn just some directors if I can't answer the questions. But just kind of going down through the list, I've tried to roll these up a little bit so that they're related and not trouble you with all the line item detail here, but I'll talk in terms of issues as I go through this list. In the general fund, in the engineering department, the proposal is to appropriate a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the issue that you just heard about in the study session. This is the next portion of the flood plain mitigation project with one hundred percent of that hundred and sixty thousand dollars funded through an NRCS grant, which has already been awarded. The next item is in the parks department. The urban forestry group within the parks department was successful in securing a, it's actual federal money that's administered by the state, but it's a forestry grant that will provide for some additional certifications and also tree plantings within the city, and that's thirty thousand dollars. So, this amendment would appropriate that thirty thousand dollars in grant funding that came in mid-year. The next item relates to both administration, or excuse me, the legislative budget and library. We budgeted a fairly significant amount of money for the implementation of a citywide training program, much of it focused around upper-level management training. We've now landed on a direction in terms of who will administer that program going forward, and it's going to be in the library department. So, we're going to move a portion of the dollars that were budgeted in the legislative fund over to the library. So, the funding source is really just the movement of the budget from legislative to library, and that's sixty-four thousand dollars to be used for both program expenses and some personnel costs. The next two items are in the special revenue fund. This is where we house impact fee revenues that are related to general fund departments. Been working on a number of park improvement projects and need to appropriate an additional hundred thousand dollars from park impact fees to finalize a couple of those projects that are in progress right now. The next piece is actually the First South restoration. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, when we had flooding, there was a good portion of that, the creek bank that was damaged. We finally, we've been through the process and have been finally awarded a FEMA grant for restoration of that, but as part of the restoration, we're also proposing to do some improvements on there that'll add some access from the contractor's legacy park down into the creek bed there. So, that total project's seven hundred ninety-five thousand with five hundred ninety-five of that coming from the FEMA grant and the remaining two hundred thousand dollars to come from impact fees. In our vehicle and equipment fund, there are two items there, one for the police department, one for the power department. On the police side, we actually had some timing issues with the vendor who had some supply chain issues, and as we were preparing the budget for fiscal twenty-five, told us there would not be an ordering window during the course of the year, so the department didn't budget what would have been regularly scheduled replacements of vehicles. They did, however, open an ordering window unexpectedly here in the last month or so, so this amendment would appropriate two hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the public service or public safety reserve fund to allow them to replace those scheduled vehicles earlier than we thought we might be able to otherwise.
How many vehicles are on there to be replaced, and what's the price per vehicle?
Chief might remember some details that I don't. I believe the vehicles were in the ballpark of sixty-five thousand dollars apiece.
Okay. And how many? Four?
The next one is in the power department. They did budget for the replacement of a Digger Derrick truck. This is a large line truck that digs holes for replacement of poles. They went out to bid, the bids came back, but they came in higher than what was budgeted. This is a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, but we need to appropriate out of their reserves an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to cover what the actual bid price on that was. Next, in the water department, this is a known issue. When we issued bonds back in two thousand one for the water tank replacement, we ended up being subject to some arbitrage payments. Basically, that means we issued the bonds at an interest rate, had the money, the cash on hand, and had it investment, had it invested while the project was under construction at a rate higher than what the interest payments on the debt were. And for tax-exempt municipal bonds, the IRS doesn't like when you do that, so we're subject to remit the balance of that. The good news to that is we were issuing bonds at a relatively low rate and the market jumped all of a sudden, so we issued it at a good time. We've known that we're subject to remitting that seventy-two thousand dollars, so it's been held in a liability account, but the time is now due for us to pay that. So, this would appropriate the dollars to allow us to remit that arbitrage payment. Last couple here, in the power department. I think you're aware of this, but a few years ago, we did have a diesel spill. I wrote oil there, I guess they kind of come from the same place. But at the power plant, some of that got into a storm drain and we had a spill that went into irrigation ditch. Just this last summer, we got news from the EPA that they were, I wrote fined, but I'm sorry, I didn't do a very good job on that. There's a fine associated with that spill. Initially, it was in the ballpark of a hundred thousand dollars, but we went through some negotiations with the EPA and our city attorney made a compelling argument to them, was able to get the fine reduced down to thirty-five thousand dollars, but we do need to pay that, so that'll come from reserves in the power department. In the stormwater department, we've entered into a new development or a development reimbursement agreement. This is for a subdivision up on the east side, so this is for stormwater-related infrastructure that is beyond the scope of what the developer is responsible for, but will use other impact fees that are in reserve to reimburse the developer who's going to put the improvements in as they develop the land. Finally, in the golf area, they've had some issues with their point-of-sale system and golf operation system. So, they've gone out and done some market research and landed on a new vendor that they'd like to use there. The current vendor we use actually, we're in a trade situation, so we allow them a certain number of tee times, which they can then resell. So, cash out of pocket for us over the last few years has been zero, but there has been an opportunity cost as we allow them to sell some of our green fees. The new vendor, we won't do the trade agreement, we'll just pay them. But the real funding source there is we'll get those tee times that we were giving to the previous vendor back to us, which we can then resell. Golf course actually thinks we'll get a better deal paying cash now than when we entered into that original agreement. So, five thousand dollars will cover that for the rest of the year for them. And then finally, they, the golf course is also proposing to amend the comprehensive fee schedule and institute a new fee for golf groups that would like to book outside of the booking window. So, a premium of twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars per player on that one is what they'd like to institute. Any questions on any of those items?
Well, on the golf course ones, that, that, the point-of-sale system that they're going to be using, is there, is it a subscription-based or you buy the software as-is and that's the one-time five thousand dollar fee?
It's subscription-based, and the five thousand dollars actually, they went through a pretty good negotiation with them as we talked through this amendment. The subscription fee is seven thousand dollars annually. They initially proposed to start that as the effective date, which is February first. I told them it would be nice if we could get the subscription year aligned with our fiscal year. The company agreed to not start charging the subscription fee until July first, so it'll actually be in next budget year before they start charging it. The five thousand dollars is actually a one-time fee for training of this system, so we'll pay that now. It'll go away, and then future years from here on out will be seven thousand dollars a year.
So, it's for training?
Right.
And does it come out of their, their reserves, the golf?
Well, this one, as I mentioned, the current system, they, we give the vendor a set number of tee times that they can resell, so they're getting their value out of their ability to resell those tee times. We'll not take those reservations back and we can then sell those tee times. So, they anticipate that they'll be able to more than recover the five thousand dollars with the additional tee times that they have access to that the city can now sell as part of their normal operation.
Bruce, maybe you could talk buckets just for a second, because I think golf is slightly ahead of the revenue projections for this fiscal year, but they don't have budget expenditure authority, is my understanding.
Right. So, there's the issue of having cash and the issue of having the authority from the city council to spend that cash. And really, that's what this amendment is doing, is saying from the five thousand dollars in revenue that they anticipate or have already collected, we'd like to spend five thousand of it that we didn't have in the original budget.
Tell me about this twenty-five dollar per player thing, so you can, if you're willing to spend, you can book next July, right now?
I might, I'll have to probably turn to Stacy if she knows the answer. I don't know, I don't think Craig's here, and I'll get lost in the details. Whatever the current booking window is, which I can't remember if it's seven days or ten days.
I think it's a week, isn't it, or is it ten? It's five days, okay. And now you can go like five months ahead? Can you really, at twenty-five bucks?
To me, a twenty-five dollar fee per person is pretty stiff, but kind of the reason they're setting it there is they're
Well, because it'll upset, it'll upset our yearly pass guys. Because I, a yearly pass guy's not going to be able to do that, and he can be, what, I used to always get that time? Because there are guys that wait until they can book and they're like, okay, dial.
Right.
And now it's going to be gone.
I think they're trying to set it high enough to be a deterrent, but
Interesting, that's
I guess the business question is, are we willing to take it?
Speaking as a non-golfer. Okay. So, we need to, any other questions for Bruce?
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, we need to open this up for public comment. Would anyone like to, from the public, comment on this opening the budget?
Seeing that there's no public comment, I propose or motion that we close the public hearing.
Can you second?
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, I need a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 03-2025 to open and amend the general fund, special revenue fund, vehicle and equipment fund, water fund, power fund, stormwater fund, and golf course fund budgets for operating and capital expenses applying to the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and also to amend the comprehensive fee schedule.
I will second that.
Okay, a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, Bruce. Okay, Scott, you're up for consideration of amending a code.
Thank you. Mayor Packard and members of the council, I am Scott Stewart. I think I'm probably new to you. I don't come here unless I absolutely have to, so I apologize. I thought it was a wonderful place to hang out.
Why are you here? But it's pretty cool, Scott, thanks.
So, the purpose of the amendment that is being proposed is just to adjust a little bit some of the building that is allowed on the west side, west of Fourth West. As you're probably aware, we've got a fairly high water table, and it's fairly consistent in the west portion of the city. Some time ago, well before my tenure, there was an ordinance that was passed that actually is very effective at keeping basements out of the groundwater, basically by eliminating basements, and even keeping things like crawl spaces quite high. This is addressing just one provision of this code. There's two provisions I want to address. The first, I'll just talk about the residential. On 650 West, there was a street that, a partial street that went in. The development was such that they weren't able to tie into the sewer and storm drain the way they would have liked to, which would have enabled the street to stay fairly level with the rest of the streets, and instead, they had to tie into Center Street, which is a fairly elevated storm drain and sewer system. So, they actually had to raise the street as they went away from Center Street to be able to get the proper gravity drainage to be able to accommodate drainage. What's, that's done is it's made all the homes, as you go further north on that 650 West, they've had to come up higher and higher because of the provision we had in place that simply says the bottom level of your home has to be above the top back of the curb on the street, which in most places is fairly okay. In this case, and some homes have actually gone in there, they've had to really elevate their foundations because they still have to put their footings down thirty inches below basically ground level, and then they bring up a tall foundation that they have to fill to be able to then get their bottom floor above the back of curb. We did have a request. Gene Hyatt, who owns one of the lots towards the north end of that street, asked if there was any way that he might be able to get some relief to that. It seemed to me that the ordinance, while effective, was oversimplified in the case of 650 West. So, the first provision, number one of Title 10-105, is to maintain the language that is currently in place. It will still apply throughout everything west of Fourth West, but to allow an exception in the case of a street that has been artificially elevated substantially because of the sewer and stormwater drainage, that would allow them to use as the point of reference for their lowest floor the actual grade that would be on the lot and the surrounding area that might cause flooding onto their lot, so that it's elevated above that instead of just using the top back of curb. It would meet the intent or the desire of keeping basements or lower levels from flooding. but it would be able to allow a little bit of a different design and enable a little bit more for a homeowner or a builder to be able to put on one of those lots without the considerable cost of putting in a big tall foundation just to fill it up with dirt. So that would be the first provision. The second one addresses commercial, also in the same zone, everything west of Fourth West. Right now, again, we have a little bit more detail on that, but basically what it does is require a commercial entity, and it's restricted, interestingly enough, to just along Fourth West to be three, within 300 feet of Fourth West.
Fourth South, right?
Fourth South.
Yeah, the other west, Fourth South, excuse me, thank you, Troy. And we had an application from Valvoline. They are wanting to put in a service station just to the west of Smith's. And they use a model that uses a work pit or a service pit that actually goes down into the ground. They have a platform basically that the cars drive across, and then they work from underneath to be able to access the oil and everything else they do. The way that the ordinance addresses that would not allow that to work for two reasons. The first is the fact that to get a service pit to work, you would have to elevate the building so high that you would have this incredible ramp to get up into the building to then be able to drive across. And the other difficulty is that there's really no drainage available for them, which is one of the provisions of the code, to actually work with a drainage district to be able to get the water that might come around the building to then be able to send it into the drainage system so that it can be taken care of in that way, because they can't put it into the storm drain. Have I confused anyone sufficiently?
Me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not really confused, but I, I do have a couple of questions, so on the
I'm sorry, let me go ahead and finish. I just want to make sure
Oh, okay.
what I'm saying has, isn't too long.
Okay, I thought you were finished, but
So what we're proposing is that instead of just using, collecting of groundwater around the foundation of a building and then putting it into drainage, that we prevent groundwater from being able to come into a building. Think of it as, if you will, as a swimming pool liner, but instead of keeping the water in, we're trying to keep the water out. So what we're proposing is to use modern materials that would actually be wrapped entirely around the subsurface portion of the building that is seamless and would keep all of the water from being penetrated, so that rather than having to deal with groundwater, whether high or low, it just becomes a non-issue. Now I think I'm done.
Okay.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so two questions. First of all, on the 650 West or whatever it was with the sewer slope. So i- if I understand right, the street would still have to be lifted in order to get the sewer to drain properly, but you're saying that we should rewrite that so that the foundations of the homes don't have to be that high? Do I understand that properly?
Essentially, the street's already there.
Mm-hmm.
And what we're just looking to do is make it so that, yes, the, the bottom of the lowest floor is the way it's written, but you could think of that as a basement floor or a crawl space floor or just the main level floor, doesn't necessarily have to be above the top back of curb, but instead could be lowered down to a more natural location that has its bearing point as the natural grade or the finished grade of the area around it. Groundwater doesn't, just because we elevate the ground, doesn't mean the groundwater follows it if there's lower levels around it. And so this wouldn't put them in danger of being down in groundwater, and it would just give a little bit of relief for that tremendously tall foundation and then all of the dirt field that has to be brought in to fill that back up.
You could actually put a basement in, because you could drain into a sewer.
Yes, you could do something like that.
They just have to have ejectors to get the sewers.
Right, you'd have to lift it up, so totally separate issue is what you would do with any of the water waste developed in the building versus what is coming up from the groundwater.
And then, and then the second que, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
The second question I had was with the the lubrication pit, whatever it is. So some years ago, when Zepi's came in, they requested a basement, and there was some sort of mitigation system that they put in, I think, for the basement of Zepi's. They needed some storage or something, and so there was groundwater mitigation in there. Is this the same type of thing or is this a different system?
You know what? I don't have the experience or time in the city to refer to actually
Yeah, so most of this language was adjusted when Zepi's came in, and so now what Scott is doing is he's changing it to even make it make more sense for another opportunity that a commercial user could use. And so if you look here, if you look at what has been crossed out underneath subsection three, well, actually, just that subsection three was added when Zepi's came in, and so they had the sub requirements of A through F, and now what Scott is doing is he's saying, hey, there is another thing out there that wasn't considered at that time that he feels comfortable with, Scott does, and so he's saying, hey, if you do that, then you gotta do A and you gotta do F, but you don't have to do anything in between. And so this is just making another option.
Okay.
And it would apply not only to the Valvoline, but of course, anything else that might come in to give other options to be able to have some development in that area for commercial.
Mindy, you had a question?
Sorry, I, you said west of Fourth South or?
Forgive me.
It's south of Fourth South.
West of
Or under west.
Okay, the ordinance itself addresses everything west of Fourth West, but the commercial portion, the way that it's written, if you look at number three I've crossed out, it says located within 300 feet of Fourth South, so now we are talking about Fourth South. Between Fourth West and 12th West, and John has just pointed out, that came into play for Zepi's in particular. And so it was just located to a chunk that addressed where they were without saying specifically for this business.
Okay.
And so what we're doing is we're just saying, well, let's apply it across the board to anything that's commercial, as long as there is another viable way of addressing it.
Okay, cool.
Make it sense?
Yep.
It is. One of the other things is that the garage elevation or the driveway elevation still has to slope downward from the house to the curb. So that point at which it would be able to come up has actually been addressed, as well as the house still has to have the grade slope away from the house so that it maintains, the grade just has to slope according to code 10 feet away from the house and be elevated at least six feet. But the other thing is that it has to be, there's a little provision that they have to keep their base elevation still above all of the surrounding grade such that if there were some water that pools, it's still elevated, elevated above that.
Okay. Other questions for Scott?
I think it's awesome. Thanks for thinking of it. I mean, it's
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
I actually live on 650 West.
Okay.
In my experience, our house was the highest up until they built a couple more. It does seem a little silly seeing dump truck after dump truck after dump truck, and for days and days and days and days, lifting up the ground 20 feet in the air and then their footings.
So this makes more sense.
Oh, yeah, I'm a little salty with my neighbor. I definitely just looked up the flat map and I met my neighbor, so.
And I apologize, we didn't address this a couple of years ago. It would have aided other homes that have gone in there.
Okay, other questions for Scott? John?
Mayor, I, I apologize. I'm looking at what's before the council, and we need to make some adjustments to this ordinance. I think my staff read it and might have missed something, and so I don't know if we can, if I could go with Scott, just to his office really fast to make a quick, some quick adjustments and bring it down. It's just to keep it in line with what our rules are.
Okay, why don't you do that? I think we got a closed session, so.
Now, that's not a euphemism for the woodshed, right?
So what do we do here? We just
You could, you can adjourn to a closed session, then you'll leave your closed session, come back into open session.
Okay, so we'll adjourn to a closed session while you're doing that and we'll be right back.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I apologize.
You have three minutes.
Okay, we'll hurry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to a closed session.
For, for the purpose of property?
For the purpose of property. And then we'll come back and close the meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second that, if that's what it is.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, sorry.
Craig?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.